I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission. Regular meeting July 21st. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the power of indivisible, proceeding justice.
Heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for the political area. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Marty Sanders.
Here.
Ryan Benner.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Odell. Mr. Mr. Lowens. Mr. Bridgers.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Munt. Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Here ma'am. I know Commissioner Odell and Commissioner Munt both have excused absences. I haven't heard from Mr. Lowens. Anyways, uh, let's move on. Do we have any announcements or disclosures from any up board members? Okay, move on to item seven A, the minutes from the June 16th meeting. Are there any additions or subtractions?
Chair Taylor.
Mr. Slack.
Um, on item five announcements, uh, describes, uh, ad valorem sales tax abatement. But that's not really a sales tax, so could we strike that term from the ad valorem tax description, please? Not a sales tax abatement.
Okay. There are a motion to approve with the corrections? I need a motion first.
I move we approve with corrections.
Second.
Motion is second by, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to public comment. If there's any members of the public wishing to address the board on any non-agenda items, uh, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section. We'll move on to item nine A, St. Lucie County Fire EMS Impact Fee Study 2022 Update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. John Decanich, Director of Innovation and Performance Division for the county. Article, uh, three, chapter twenty-four of the St. Lucie Code establishes the county fire district is the sole provider of fire emergency services in the county. Additionally, section twenty-four dash one-five-one, or excuse me, fifty-one D, provides the county must collect fire, uh, EMS protection impact fees in order to provide the fire district with funds to adequately provide the fire EMS services for all county residents, including residents of the city. County first adopted this, uh, the fire impact fee in two thousand. The fire board, fire district board, approved the final update of their St. Lucie County Fire Rescue Impact Fee dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, at the fire board meeting on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Table, Roman numeral six dash five, changes in, uh, uh, in the fire, uh, it depicts the changes in the fire EMS impact fees. It's on page seven of the update, and it details the incremental phased increase over a two or four-year period, with the exception of a few land use categories that are proposed decrease upon adoption implementation. Recommendation, staff recommend, is recommending the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve St. Lucie County Fire EMS Impact Fee Study two thousand twenty-two update and adopt the ordinance adopting the proposed fire EMS impact fee schedule. And Fire District Chief, uh, Langle is here to answer any questions you may have with regard to the study and capital improvements. I know many of you were provided some information in addition to the agenda item. So I'll call up Chief Langle for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of of staff or the fire district at this time? From the board? I did appreciate the supplemental information that was provided. That was good to see. All right. No questions from anybody? Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Uh, this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public that would wish to address the board on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Commissioner Benner. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers.
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes ma'am.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we'll go on to item nine B. Uh, future land use map amendment to change the land use categories from RU to RM. Uh, the Meritage Homes of Florida. And we have Ms. Jody.
Good evening, Chair Taylor and members of the commission. Staff, are you presenting nine B and nine C together as they're related?
Sorry.
Can we open, if they are, then we, I want two motions, but we need to open nine C also, Chair.
Yeah, we're gonna do, yeah, item B and C together, and then open the public hearing as an, as one item and then two separate motions.
For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting Agenda Item nine B and nine C, two petitions submitted by Cotler and Haring on behalf of Meritage Homes for amendment to the future land use from residential urban, residential medium, and commercial to the mixed-use development with subpolicies. And rezoned from the RS-two and commercial general to a planned unit development with a concurrent preliminary site plan for the development of a hundred and sixty multifamily residential townhome subdivision to be known as Tidewater Planned Unit Development. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, an advertisement for this public hearing was placed in a local newspaper on Sunday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-two. In addition, notices were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject properties, and a sign was placed on the subject property. The subject parcel is outlined in red and is situated along the west side of US Highway one. The site is bordered by single-family residential, general commercial parcels, and existing Rego Dodge automobile dealership to the north. To the west, the site is bordered by existing single-family homes and vacant single-family residential zone parcels adjacent to the open space area. To the south of the subject parcels is a vacant commercial area and small commercial out parcels to the southeast and borders South US Highway one to the east. The designated future land use for the subject parcels are residential medium, residential urban, and commercial. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to reclassify the land use category to mixed-use development. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment would change the future land use map designation for the collective eighteen point seven-three acres from residential urban, residential medium, and commercial to a mixed-use category with specific use designations for commercial and residential up to nine units per acre. The subject parcel is currently zoned as commercial general and residential suburban zoning districts. The proposed zoning atlas amendment would change the official zoning atlas map designation to rezon the sixteen point three-seven area subset of the subject parts, property from residential, single-family, and commercial general to a planned unit development with a preliminary site plan. A proposed two-point-five acre out parcel in the north, in the northern west corner of the subject site is to retain a commercial general zoning designation. The sixteen point three sec, three-seven acres preliminary site plan demonstrates the overall site, depicting the one hundred and sixty townhome lots with the, within the Tidewater Plan Development. The applicant states that the proposed plan may see intent of the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan by, by the creation and/or preservation of affordable housing for all current and anticipated future residents. Through the implementation of a six-unit and eight-unit buildings made of four two-bedroom homes, two two-bedrooms, and four one-bedroom layouts, allowing for a variety of housing. The applicant is requesting to deviate from the section seven point zero four, point zero three, allowing for, of the St. Lucie County building spacing formula. The two-point-five retained commercial out parcel as in red is not part of the preliminary site plan, and we require a separate site plan approval. The preliminary plan demonstrates meeting the required thirty-five percent open space requirements outlined in pink and purple, including a stormwater management lake in the center of the development. The purpose of the lake is to design, is designed to ensure proper drainage and runoff flows on the site to prevent flooding and any other potential draining issues that could arise with a change of draining, draining, drainage pattern. The lake will also have a fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three square foot littoral zone with a native vegetation, which will serve as a natural habitat for small native wildlife, as well as an upland transition zone to buffer the littoral zone from the adjacent residents. This site, this, this slide depicts the two different, I'm sorry, yes. This slide depicts the two different typical lot sizes. A twenty-foot by ninety-foot with a single car garage and an eight-foot wide driveway, and a twenty-four-foot by ninety-foot with a double car garage and a sixteen-foot wide driveway. As a condition of approval, staff is recommending a minimum of ten-foot driveway for pedestrian safety entering and exiting a vehicle onto a hard surface. The preliminary landscape plan is designed to improve the project perimeter, creating a strategic yet aesthetic buffering between the residential neighborhood and the adjacent South US Highway one right-of-way. This will promote active pedestrian transportation such as walking and cycling, as well as a recreational usage of the perimeter sidewalk. The internal sidewalk network will ensure residents within the planned unit development also have access to the exterior sidewalk system, ensuring that the potential for people to walk to and from the future commercial parcel along the US Highway corridor. One of the much, one of the much-needed public benefits includes the proposed off-site improvements associated with the Tidewater Plan Development. Will enable for, further development along the US Highway one corridor by approximately eight hundred feet south of Midway Road to Sager Avenue, which is currently limited to the lack of availability of sanitary sewer surface. Developers proposing to install approximately five thousand two hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer force main within the US Highway one right-of-way, which connects to the existing Fort Pierce Utilities Authority manhole. This new sanitary sewer sewer force main will be able to serve undeveloped and underdeveloped parcels south of Midway Road, Fort Pierce Utilities Authority service limits. Additionally, the proposed force main can potentially be expand, extended south approximately two thousand feet further to the southern limit of the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority service area at Sager Avenue. Access to the site is proposed via one right-in and right-out driveway connection on US Highway one. The proposed right-in and right-out driveway will be supported by the southbound right-turn lane to support safety as ingress left-turn movements will be offset north and south of the proposed right-in, right-out driveway, southbound right-turn lane on US Highway one at Sunshine and at Easy Street. Respectfully, as drivers will be required to perform a U-turn movement, the, the project will be gated, a school bus loop will be provided outside the entrance gates with sidewalk connectivity for students to traverse to and from safely to the bus stop. The community is proposing a recreational amenity that includes a cabana and pool area for the future residents within the Tidewater subdivision. In accordance to the public notices, notices and responses form were mailed to adjacent property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. Of the twenty-nine notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services received no responses. The applicant did not hold a neighborhood meeting, however, neighborhood meetings are not required, but strongly encouraged. The proposed future land use map amendment contain, conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Florida statute, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the planning and zoning acting as a local planning agency to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for the future land use amendment for residential urban, residential medium, and commercial to a mixed-use development land use designation. The proposed planned unit development rezoned and preliminary site plan conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Sections eleven point zero six, point zero three, and eleven point zero two, point zero seven, and is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commissioner forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Tidewater Planned Unit Development Rezone and Preliminary Site Plan, subject to the following recommendations. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, a final plat must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The community clubhouse or summer use facilities shall be consistent with the community architectural standards of St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section seven, ten, twenty-four. All residential driveways shall be a minimum of ten feet wide. Before issuance of a vegetation removal permit or exemption, updated a survey to determine the current activity status of the onsite osprey nest shall be provided. Should the nest be deemed active, the nest has eggs or flightless young, then the incidental take permit from the United States Fish and Wildlife Services is required. Before issuance of a vegetation removal permit or exemption, a hundred percent survey to determine the presence of a state-protected gopher turtles and state-protected burrowing owl shall be required. If any gopher turtle borrows are identified within the twenty-five feet of the proposed disturbance, all tortoise's shall be relocated per the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission protocol. If any burrow and owls are identified coordination with the Fish and Wildlife or United States Fish and Wildlife Services shall be required. Before the issuance of a certificate occupancy, all category one invasive plant species shall be eradicated from the site. Thank you, that concludes staff's presentation, and we do have the applicant who has a quick presentation as well.
Any questions of staff at this time?
I have one.
Mr. Slack.
Jody, you mentioned, uh, asking for, um, an adjustment to the county's requirement in terms of adjacency or spacing on the residential units. Could you expand on that a little, please?
According to our code, we require a building spacing formula, which positions the buildings in different ways, so you don't have a flat facade. The applicant has requested to deviate from the building spacing formula to provide either higher density or to provide a little bit more clustering between the units. They will be meeting the drainage and the landscape requirements.
Have they been specific about what the deviation is?
Yes. And the building spacing formula has a calculation and a formula, so they're not going to be using that formula to, to set the buildings offset. Um, they're just going with the straight facade.
So that's the, the front of the building, you mean the unit spacing, or the, like, two separate buildings?
Two separate buildings, so one building would be faced to the front, and then other one be offset, so it kind of gives you some open space in between the buildings.
Okay. But what does that have to do with the facade?
In other words, it's linear. Full object.
I'm confused. Well, we're talking about the building separation, not the facade of the building itself. Is it in the presentation? In the presentation?
I apologize, I do not have an actual slide showing the building deviation.
Is it in the presentation coming up? Is it in your presentation, Dan?
Good evening, Chair Taylor, members of the commission. Corey Benton, Planning Manager, for the record. Uh, to, uh, expand upon, uh, Jody's indication of the building spacing formula, it's a provision of our code that applies to any multifamily buildings of three or more units that are two stories or greater in height. Uh, it considers the height and mass of a multifamily structure than its relation to other residential buildings and outward property lines, providing a balance for view corridors, open space, green space. Uh, frequently, it's, it's something that we see on the Hutchinson Island areas, where as a building is, uh, you know, adding floors sixty, eighty, ninety feet in height, they need to be more concentrated toward the center of the property, uh, increasing the setbacks. So again, larger mass, taller building, is required to have greater spacing between structures. Uh, oftentimes, through a planned unit development proposal and rezoning, applicants are proposing to deviate from that spacing formula. Uh, typically, we're seeing in PUDs, uh, the mainland area, two, potentially three stories in height. So the mass of the building is not on the same scale as some of those waterfront or oceanfront structures. But through this application, as highlighted in page fourteen of the staff report, uh, staff analyzed the proposed deviation from the building spacing formula and has identified that the concentration of units while maintaining the overall thirty-five percent green and open space fulfills the, the intent of the PUD to allow for this mix of units as well as the, the surrounding characteristics of the project.
Okay.
That makes more sense. Sorry, Jody.
So, so the, the abatement or relief sought has to do with the spacing and relationship of the blocks of multiple units, and not with the articulation of the facade itself?
That is correct. It, it's not necessarily requiring planes, but I, what Jody's indicating, sometimes to, um, comply with the building spacing formula, it's a strategy where folks pan buildings, because it, it correlates with the angle of intersection of the setbacks between buildings. So, uh, having multiple structures in a row, uh, you would have to have them farther apart than if you have one angled or pan to a unit. So the angle of intersection is different. Uh, I'd point to, even though it's in the city of Fort Pierce's jurisdiction, the configuration of Harbor Isle structures, where they're, they're not in a direct line or row as this evening's PUD townhomes are proposed. There's a lot of different pans and angles. I believe in that, the intent in that project was to maximize different views where, where neighbors weren't looking directly at neighbors, but the surrounding area. Uh, but with this, the applicant, through design of the lake, uh, the different viewing vistas, uh, pedestrian walkways to the amenities center is, uh, you know, presenting an alternative to our, uh, stringent building spacing formula. We do have a, a few examples, uh, although the, the one that comes to mind has not been built yet. The Whispering Oaks PUD, which has a mix of townhome units and, and other typologies that was approved off of Jenkins Road on the east side, south of Orange Avenue, also had approved deviation from the building spacing formula. More recently, this, uh, commission may recall, the Ocean Glass PUD on South Hutchinson Island, uh, that was an approved project that deviated from the building spacing formula. In that instance, uh, three-story structures, uh, in close proximity to each other.
So with the formula, how far, it looks like fifteen feet is what's in between the buildings and the site plan? Where, where would it have been with the formula? You, do we know that?
Have to take a look at, at the specifics. It, it may have ranged anywhere from twenty-five to thirty feet with that separation, if there was no angle or pan. Again, they're, they, they are long, uh, townhome, uh, building structures because of, you know, six, uh, units, uh, combined, but they're not very tall for, um, the, the increase of that figure.
And are, are all the units two-story?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Are any other questions of staff at this time? All right. Dan, we're ready for you.
Right, so when you look at the street front facade, there is articulation.
Yeah, I see that.
But the view from the neighbor's property is a monolithic.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, my name is Dan Soro, for the record. Uh, I work with Cotler and Haring. We are landscape architects representing, uh, the, the applicant, Meritage Homes, on this Tidewater project. Uh, thank you for staff, for the presentation, uh, and for getting us here this evening. Uh, really appreciate, uh, the timeliness of, of this meeting. And, um, here with me this evening is, uh, Mr. Dante Fregaria, uh, with Meritage Homes, and, uh, Mr. Mike D'Amelio. If you have any specific questions for the home builder, uh, they are present with me. And also, Mr. Tim Foster, our, uh, civil and, and drainage engineer with Caulfield and Wheeler, and our, uh, traffic engineer, Mr. Sean McKenzie. Uh, this is Meritage's, uh, second project in St. Lucie County. One thing that, uh, uh, we came last meeting, uh, to, for the Azalea project, and there's, uh, two things that Meritage does really well, townhomes and single-family homes. This is their townhome, uh, project, and, uh, it'll be the newest townhome project in St. Lucie County. Um, you know, one thing that I just wanted to make, a point of clarification based upon staff's, uh, presentation to the commission was, uh, we're, we're not typically affordable housing as you may think of affordable housing. Uh, it is true in a, uh, another Treasure Coast project in the city of Stewart, uh, similar townhome community, about a hundred and sixty, uh, units. Thirty-three percent of those, uh, buyers in that, uh, in that demographic are first responders. Uh, so your, your, your firemen, uh, we had a presentation by the fire department earlier, uh, your police officers, your teachers, uh, they just seem to, uh, like this style of product, and, and it meets a need for, uh, that, um, uh, that group of, uh, of working class. You know, this is a small site for Meritage. It's, uh, just under twenty acres, located off US one. US one is the major north-south arterial collector road in St. Lucie County. Uh, most of the properties along there, uh, is, is, is already commercial. Uh, this is a mid-block area. Uh, you can see on the screen that, uh, it is, uh, just south of Midway Road. You've got the St. Lucie River and, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street, uh, just to the west of our site. Uh, we, we feel most people are going to be coming home and going to work, uh, north and south on US one, uh, coming from, uh, Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie, uh, as they, as they travel, uh, to get home and, and back to work. Sorry, kind of jumped on me a little bit. Uh, this does show kind of our surrounding neighbors. Uh, it is predominantly commercial. Uh, you have a Rego Dodge just to the north of us, and, uh, a self-storage, uh, site to the east of US one. Uh, we've also got a, uh, a, a mobile home park to, uh, to our south, and, uh, and there's a commercial, uh, parcel just to our south. We are retaining a portion of the commercial, uh, within that eighteen acres. It's about a two-and-a-half acre tract, uh, just to comply with some of the existing uses, uh, along that corridor. And the townhome product would be, uh, would be, you know, the balance of those eighteen acres, about sixteen acres or so. Uh, the property, like I said, is just under, uh, eighteen acres. Two-and-a-half of it are going to be commercial. Two-and-a-half of it are going to be commercial. The, the request before you this evening, and really why we're here, is that it's got a split land use. It's got commercial land use and residential medium land use. You can't do residential and the commercial land use, so we need to amend the land use so that we can do residential. Same thing with the zoning. There's existing commercial general zoning and, and single-family residential zoning. And with this type of product, you can't do any kind of straight zoning. You have to rezone to a PUD. Any kind of fee simple product in St. Lucie County that's less than seventy-five feet wide, you have to go to a PUD. So that's kind of a nuance with your code. That's why we're asking for the PUD zoning. This shows the existing land use, where you can see it's actually split. The red representing the commercial, the yellow actually representing the residential. And about half the site is, is red, that we want to change to, to pink. So you see the split land use kind of in that configuration. Also, the, the zoning is pretty much the same also. You've got commercial general and RS2, so we're going to be changing that to a PUD zoning. This is the code that I mentioned that really, you know, doesn't allow us to do any kind of other zoning district except for, except for PUD. If we were in an apartment site or we were some kind of rental product, you know, you could go to a medium-density residential at fifteen units per acre or nine units per acre, but because we're fee simple for sale, we have to go to the PUD. These will be platted lots. Everyone will own their front yard, their building, and their backyard. So a little bit of difference in the code. I know we've talked about it before, there's a lot of advantages to PUDs. You centralize your water and wastewater, your drainage. It allows you to have smaller lots and create open space within the community. PUDs require thirty-five percent open space, so we've located that throughout the community. It's got other benefits as well. So it's really a good tool that the county has that, that we're using for this particular project. If you can look at the site plan on your screen, really, we tried to color code and highlight the different areas that, that I think would be of interest to you. The primary access off of US-1, which is highlighted in yellow, that is a gated access as Ms. Kugler mentioned earlier. It is a ride-in and ride-out off of US-1. The, all one hundred and sixty residents are going to be coming in and out of that gate. There is an emergency access located to the north of our site for a Rego Dodge. You can kind of see the pink bubble to the north. Should a Rego Dodge ever want us to come through their property in an emergency connection, all we're trying to say is it's available if, if that is their desire. So, so that's where you see that. As I mentioned earlier, the open space, thirty-five percent of it on this small site, this is a small site. It's only eighteen acres and only sixteen of that is for townhomes. We are required to put thirty-five percent of that into open space. So there, there are a lot of considerations when you go to a PUD zoning district. And, and, and lastly, if you see the, kind of the cyan area, that's our amenity space. We do have a small cabana bath, Jack and Jill bathroom, with a cabana and a, and a pool area for the residents to, to, to participate in some outdoor recreation and to, and to have a centralized mail, mail drop-off and pickup location. This next slide, which really, I think, begins to talk about the building spacing formula, Commissioner, that, that you were questioning earlier. And as Mr. Benton mentioned, you know, we typically see that for apartment sites or condos on the beach, not really fee simple, platted townhome lots. Little bit of a difference when you're, when you're looking at one product versus another. You know, the, the, the building spacing formula is really a suburban code. When you want to create those different view sheds out of the different windows and buildings and have a more space in between, in between your structures. This is on US-1, you know, it's a commercial node, it's a major urban corridor. You really want that, that density and that ability to have the residents in there walking to different services along US-1 and having that compactness that you see. But even on this plan, we were able to create the drainage areas and the drainage easements, which are going to collect all the stormwater runoff from our site through a series of pipes and through the series of drainage chambers and bring it to the center of the lake, treat it, filter it. We're adding some aeration and some water fountains in the center to amenitize those townhomes that are circulated around the water management tract. And, and some dry detention out front. You know, we were, we were pretty strategic in this site plan. We've been working on it for a while. We really wanted to pull those units away from US-1. That's why you got the two-and-a-half acre commercial parcel out along US-1. We located our dry detention pond out along US-1. There are some existing commercial uses right to the west of our detention pond that are still remaining today. Not, 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 not too close to our site. But that is that. I think this highlights the two-and-a-half acre commercial site. There is an existing billboard on our site that we're, we're going to keep in place. It's also where the lift station location is going to be. And, and you can see the gated entry right there. As, as Mr. Sanders pointed out earlier, you know, the school pickup and drop-off would be before that gate. We've done a traffic circulation plan to show how a school bus can navigate that center island and be able to circulate without having to go through the community. Any access to the commercial site will be in the area identified as the commercial access. So it will share the, share the primary drive with the commercial. All of the, the ride-in and left-out of the commercial site is shown there also. I wanted to highlight one thing for the commission tonight. And, and really, it's, you know, just the kind of quality of this development. So when you look at the buildings, when you look at the driveways, when you look at what Meritage has done for the site, to really go above and beyond the code, they've added a lot of extra guest parking. These are all three-bedroom townhomes. So all three-bedroom townhomes, they all park themselves. We don't need the extra parking to meet any code. The extra parking is there for the guests. The extra parking is there for maybe family members visiting, those kinds of things. So you see the extra parking that we've provided onsite. Also, the paver driveways. You know, a lot of developers, to save money, would just continue the asphalt from the road right up to the front of the garage. Meritage is committed to doing concrete pavers, which is a better aesthetic and a better look for, for the whole community. And also, the continuous sidewalk looping all the way around that center block of homes and the, and the retention pond. So really trying to elevate the aesthetics to a higher standard with this community. It's just a quick little rendering of the elevation of the architecture. We do have a six-unit building and an eight-unit building. You can see that the, the massing and the scale of the, of the building is shown here. One thing that this, this doesn't represent is the landscaping that would go in front of it. You know, it's only a two-story tall product, so it's not going to get very large. But the landscape plan that staff has reviewed conceptually and has approved does help break up that facade. The palm trees and the understory really provides the diversity, I think, that is needed when you, when you deal with a structure that is six units and eight units long. So that's one, one thing that I wanted to point out. This does show the mix of the number of, of two-car garages and one-car garages. You can see on, on the top there, all of these are a thirty, or I'm sorry, a three-bedroom type product. The twenty-foot lots do have the two-car garages and the, I'm sorry, the twenty-foot lots have the one-car garage with the eight-foot driveway. The twenty-four-foot lot does have the two-car garage with the sixteen-foot driveway. All three-bedroom products. And one thing that we would like the board's consideration of this evening, and one of the, I think, benefits of going to a PUD, is the ability to create a site-specific land development code. To, to treat PUDs a little bit different than you would a standard code that's required under your land development regulations. And, and if I was doing a single-family home somewhere in St. Lucie County, or we were having a fee simple type product, I'd have to put in a minimum of a ten-foot driveway leading up to the garage. That's, that's something that your code requires. And, and in this particular case, because we have really two styles of garages. We've got a two-car garage and we've got a one-car garage. The one-car garage, we're showing an eight-foot driveway. And, and the reason is pretty simple. You have an eight-foot garage door. So you have an eight-foot garage door with an eight-foot driveway. That's why, you know, we've, we've shown it like that. Your code currently, as it's written, doesn't allow it. It only allows a ten-foot. So we would like your consideration to entertain us going to an eight-foot driveway for this particular project. All the plans were drawn at eight-foot driveway. Landscape plan was drawn at eight-foot driveway. So that's, that's one thing that we're, we were asking for this evening. And, and just to highlight how that looks on a landscape plan. And the reason why we want the eight-foot driveway as opposed to the ten-foot on the one-car garages is really because of, you know, a couple of different things. We need it for landscaping. So to break up one driveway from another driveway, you want to be able to plant it with shrubs and ground covers and trees. And also, it separates ownership. So if you have two driveways right next to each other, the landscape strip in between it acts as kind of, hey, this is your side, this is my side. If you have just a straight paver area connecting the areas, you know, those lines get blurred a little bit? And it's not as, not as distinctive as if it were landscaped. So that area in the green, you know, that would really need to go away if we had to go to the ten-foot driveway on the single-car garages. So, so really, that was the only thing that we were, we were asking for your consideration of tonight, other than the recommendations that staff had made to the commission. I think we're in agreement with, with everything except for that one provision. And just in conclusion, you know, this is a medium-density residential townhome product. It provides good use of an existing undeveloped infill site along a major thoroughfare. The requested FLUMA and PUD is consistent with the provisions in the land development code and the comp plan and is compatible with the surrounding area. The DRC committee did recommend approval. We would ask for your favorable recommendation to move forward to the county commission on both the FLUMA and the PUD with one, one request with a revised condition to allow the residential driveways of the single car from ten feet to eight feet. Would like to enter this into the record for both agenda items tonight. On behalf of the applicant and the entire project team, we thank you for your time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soro. Is there any questions of the applicant from the board at this time? Mr. Slack?
Okay, a couple of questions that I have. You're, you're talking about this eight-foot wide versus ten-foot wide. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we require a ten-foot wide driveway is that's also the same size as a standard parking space as required in, in St. Lucie County. It's a matter of safety for the passengers to get out and not turn an angle or trip over the shrubbery that's planted right next to the driveway. And the, for me, the only way I feel comfortable shrinking the driveway space down would be if there would be some paved areas in the parking space, if you will, the upper part of the driveway close to the door, the garage door, where someone would tend to park outside the garage space, especially on these single-car garages. You're going to tend to have maybe one inside the garage and one in the driveway. And a safe place for someone to step out onto paved area from the middle of the vehicle. Not where the engine is, not where the trunk is, but right in the middle where the doors would open so that someone could step out and not turn an ankle or be unsafe. It's, it's not about like handicapped accessibility here. It's just about personal safety and also maintenance of the beautiful landscaping that you're proposing. It's lovely, but it's going to get mangled by people climbing out of their cars and hitting it with doors and things like that. So in the interest of the safety of your future residents and the maintenance of the landscaping and the neighborhood looking nice, I would suggest that, you know, perhaps we can do eight feet wide for portions of that driveway so you get these nice beds and that separation of the units and the aesthetic you're looking for, but have some, some safe harbor areas for getting in and out of the vehicle for the people who live there.
May I respond?
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate those comments. And, and as you know, we'll have an HOA that's going to be maintaining the landscaping in perpetuity. So they're going to be the ones that are really responsible for that upkeep. As far as, as the eight-foot driveway are concerned, you know, if you add, let's say, two feet, so you have a foot overhang on each side of the garage, you know, I see that kind of as a safety concern because if you get some drivers that, you know, really are thinking, well, I can just pull straight in, I'm lined up on the pavers, and, and really, the front end of their, their car gets clipped because they're not in the middle of the driveway. So that was something that we, we thought of when going to the eight feet. You know, nothing's going to preclude any of these homeowners from adding extra sand set pavers to where if they, if they want to have an additional, you know, call it a foot or so extra, where they open their car door. I mean, they can do that with the PUD. And, and if you can bring up the site plan, maybe I can bring it up real quick. Leading to each alcove of the entry into the, into the building is a, is a separate walkway. See if I can get a close-up one. Maybe I'll go back. But there is a separate dedicated walkway leading up to the front door of each of the units. So you, you see that kind of image on the screen there. There are pockets for landscaping, but if we were to, you know, adhere to the strict code, lot three and lot four, that would be one solid pavement area. So, and, and we tried to, you know, locate those walkways where, where if there was a car out in the driveway instead of being inside the garage, they would have a, you know, an easy path up to the front door.
Have, have you used this same layout in other townhome developments that Meritage has done?
We have. We, we just completed a project very similar to this in the city of Stewart.
They have eight-foot driveways there?
Yes.
Was this something that staff reviewed and denied? Or?
No, it, 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 it came up late in the day, Chair Taylor, and, and really, it was something that we wanted to... Well, they did review it. I'm sorry, let me, let me, let me change my, my, my statement. The plan shows eight-foot sidewalks on the site plan, or driveways. The landscape plan shows eight-foot driveways on the landscape plan, so it was always eight-foot. You know, this is a conceptual PUD, so we will staff, still have to come back before this board for a site plan. But the PUD site plan and the PUD landscape plan that's been reviewed has always showed eight-foot driveways.
Okay.
I have some other.
Mr. Slack, sorry, put it in there.
Yeah, no, no. It's quite all right. So I, I look at the big picture of what you guys are doing here, and bringing sewer service down a full mile from south of Midway is a wonderful public amenity that you are providing. So I don't know if there's some way to have a PUA partner with you guys to make sure that what gets installed can accommodate more parts of our community into this force main that you'll be extending. But I'd love to see that happen, and I'm thrilled that that's part of, of what makes this project happen and what it brings to the community. And that's a very nice balance, also with the fact that you're bringing in a dense and compact housing product that will help with some of our issues where it may not be truly considered affordable housing, but these are much more affordable than a lot of, a lot of product that's out there. So those are both two wonderful facets of this project. From the point of view of the neighboring residential properties, when I look at the building and it's how it's articulated, it's two stories, that's wonderful. The facade on the street front, where your residents will appreciate it, has a lot of good articulation. On the back, it's pretty monolithic, that maybe- That may be a concern with your neighbors. And given the length of the building, perhaps just a little bit of articulation will help it feel more residential and less blocky and almost institutional. And if there's any issue with goodwill with the neighbors, that might be an accommodation that you guys could provide. But I have to applaud the fact that the product that you're bringing to bear, the way you're doing it, and the service that you're providing in extending the force main is something very much needed in this community and well-appreciated.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Low?
I must agree with her on the eight-foot driveway. You know, if a person pulls a car in there and parks it, if there's two people in their car and they both go to get out, open up their doors, there's not much room on an eight-foot driveway. I wish you would look at it again and see if you can fit something in.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant at this time? I think all mine were answered. Is it going to be a guard gate or just an electronic gate?
It'll probably be the Invera system that's not manned, but it'll, you'll have your own card reader if you're a resident. And we've designed the entryway so that resident access can go straight through. There's not queuing up that's required for any of the residents. If you are visiting, there is a call box. There's a separate pull-off angle to the right where you can call and get let into the community.
On the one slide you had up of the, like, the model of it, it looked like the east-to-west roads were thinner than the north-to-south roads, but I think on the site plan, like, they're both 20 feet, right?
Yes.
Okay. It looked to me, on the drawing, it looked like it was thinner, so I was worried that it was like a one-way loop kind of thing.
It's a 50-foot right-of-way throughout the whole community, both 20-foot.
Cool. Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Do we know where the closest public transit stop is? Let me just... I have a slide on it. Commissioner Slack? And Commissioner Slack for a minute.
We didn't see it.
The closest one is at the Treasure Coast Lexus, just north of the site, and then just south of the site by the St. Lucy Drive House. We are working with transit to see if this is a viable area. I do know there is a project that we have in-house currently today that we're reviewing that could be also subject to transit, just a little bit south of this project.
So, are you done?
Yeah, I think that would be a great place for a stop, especially with the intersection with Easy Street there. And that would bring connectivity, not only to this project and the other one you're mentioning, but also to the many, many residents of Indian River Estates coming out from that end.
You're having them ride by it anyway. Why not? What does staff think about the eight-foot driveway thing? What do you guys think?
Commissioner Taylor, members of the commission? So our Public Works Department would like to see the 10-foot driveways, just for safety purposes. I understand the constraints that the applicant has on the landscaping. If we could, maybe consider nine feet, just to bring, to have a little bit more driveway and a little bit more safety for when people are stepping in and out of their car.
Are you aware of any projects that we've approved that have had an eight-foot driveway?
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, I'm not aware of anything off the top of my head. I think, building upon Ms. Kugler's indication and Commissioner Slack's thought process of maybe adding a flare in the region or the area of the driveway internal, which doors would presumably open and some of the pedestrian movements to and from the townhome unit would occur, you know, allowing for maybe from the edge of street inward, the first, you know, 12 feet to be at the eight-foot with the flare that they're designing at the roadway, and then widening, adding at least six inches on either side to the eight feet, you know, between nine and 10 feet to allow for that added flexibility.
Are these long enough for two cars?
The requirement per year Public Works Director is 22 feet. So we're at 22 feet from the property line to the face of the garage. However, there's about an eight-foot tree lawn from the edge of the roadway to the sidewalk. So essentially, you probably could fit two cars on there, but I think they would be blocking the sidewalk. And Chair Taylor, I think it probably makes a lot of sense to, and I like Ms. Kugler's suggestion of the nine feet. It seems like it's a happy medium that would allow us to do, you know, six inches on each side of the driveway and still save some of that area for landscaping.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Lowes? Go ahead.
I think Ms. Slack and Mr. Lowes got some points. If you don't build it, the homeowner's going to have to do it himself. I think of the safety factor of somebody stepping out, as Ms. Slack talks about, getting out of the car, especially if this is pavers and not paved concrete, it's uneven. I'd like to see him go to 10 feet instead of eight feet.
Commissioner Better?
Question is, if it's an eight-foot driveway and I open both my doors up, whether it's an eight-foot or 10-foot driveway, you can't have landscaping butted up against the eight-foot driveway, or my doors would be smacking into bushes and trees, and I couldn't get out of my car anyways, right? So if you open both car doors on a 10-foot wide driveway, your car doors are over the concrete on both sides anyways. So I don't know how that would impact the landscaping necessarily, because if you're making a driveway that you can't open up both doors, that's not a driveway that's functional, right?
Is there hedges along the driveway?
If you want to pull up the last slide, Jody, there are small ground covers, which really helps define one driveway from your adjacent driveway. So think of your Ficus Green Island or your, you know, Clusia Nana Dwarf. So it's really low ground cover. There's going to be sod there. So I don't think we're going to have that problem. We've designed the landscape so that when you do open your car doors, it's the low stuff.
Your ground cover consists of what? Foliage peanuts or?
Probably some sod. It's Ficus Green Island and Clusia Nana, which is, it grows probably less than a foot tall, Commissioner Lowes.
You don't have enough sod in this project to interest a mold. Giving up a little bit more ain't going to hurt nobody.
Well, if we add the, you know, the driveways, it actually makes it, you know, more impervious and less green. But, you know, if that's the direction of the commission, we think landscaping will look better. We think that'll be a better fit for the community. We think it's a higher aesthetic. But if pavers are preferred out in front of the full building, you know, that's certainly up to your discretion.
I'm kind of conflicted because I feel like if the buffer landscape zone was the goal, then whoever designed these buildings should have made them a little bit wider so we can fit it in between it. We would sacrifice a couple of units to, you know, shrink it down so we can fit a landscape upper with a 10-foot driveway. But on the other hand, I'm pretty sure I have a 16-foot driveway, and it is very annoying to have to walk into the yard because we can't fit two cars in there. Because there's no way mine's 20 feet, 20 whatever. But, I mean, I'd be happy with the 10, I mean, with the nine-foot compromise, I think. I think that's a good idea to, you know, kind of give a little bit of concessions so we can have a little more grass. Is it, do you prefer that instead of the flaring, I think?
I think we would, yeah. That way it's consistent. It's a little bit more measured.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be fine with nine, I think. Anyway. Any other questions from the staff or anybody? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sarr.
Thank you.
Chair Taylor, we have to open both the public hearings.
Yeah, I'm going to. Give me a minute. Make sure there wasn't any more questions. All right. This is a public hearing on items nine B and nine C. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Slack?
I move we approve this project, subject to the condition that the driveway, the narrower driveways be a minimum of nine feet wide.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowes. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Meritage Homes. We'll be forwarding it to the board of organic commissioners, and we appreciate it.
Chair Taylor?
Commissioner Slack?
Was that vote for both B and C?
Oh, I need to do a second one.
Or do we have a second vote to do?
We've got to do a second vote.
I would prefer, if you go ahead and do, I mean, if you kind of say the same thing, I'll foresee, but yes, I'd prefer to have two votes.
Declareify yours was for nine B. And we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for nine C.
For nine C, I move that we approve, subject to the same condition I just mentioned.
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Benner. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Catherine. I kept forgetting. You've told me like six times. Okay. Moving on to item 90. Acting as a local planning agency, Mr. Miller's petition for a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, members of the commission. Again, Corey Benton, Planning Manager, for the record, accompanied by Irene Settlemeyer, our newest addition to the Planning Division. She comes to us. She's our newest senior planner. She previously served Martin County. She's been a St. Lucy County resident for numerous years. We're very, she's an AICP certified planner. We're very excited to have her contributing through public service here in St. Lucy County. And she will be facilitating presentation of item 90 this evening.
If she can survive Martin County, she's certainly welcome here.
Yes, thank you.
A lot more chill up here.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, Irene Settlemeyer, Senior Planner with the St. Lucy County Planning and Development Services Department, and I'm honored to be making my first presentation to you this evening, and I'm grateful to have Corey to help me out. So this is a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment of the future land use map, Loop Road Mixed Use Activity Area. The proposed amendment will be applicable to just the 34.7 acre parcel. So notice of the public hearing was published in the St. Lucy News Tribune on July 10th, and courtesy copies were mailed to some 17 owners of property within 500 feet of the subject property. Copies of those notices are in your agenda packet, and we have not received comments from any recipients. The property is located in the northeast quadrant of the county, about a half a mile east of King's Highway and about a half a mile north of Orange Avenue. You can see that the eastern property boundary fronts Jensen Road. The northern boundary of the property does not actually front Floyd Johnson Road. There's a canal and canal right-of-way in there, providing about 75 feet of separation between the property and the roadway, right-of-way. The St. Lucy County Property Appraiser characterizes the land use as agricultural. The future land use map is on the screen in front of you. The property currently has the future land use designation of mixed. That will remain in place. The property to the south also has the same future land use designation, the mixed use development. There is residential urban to the north, to the east, and the west. So this slide shows the Loop Road Mixed Use Activity Area. The area with the low-intensity use is the property that is the subject of the amendment, and the medium-intensity use is to the south. The text of the policy governing this low-intensity area is what is subject to the proposed amendment. This is the proposed future land use map sub-area policy amendment, showing the strikeout and the addition. So what will be removed is the requirement that 50% of the northeast corner be developed with, 50% of it be commercial, and that 25% of the rest of the property be office and 25% of the rest of the property be institutional. And instead, what would be permitted is light industrial warehouse land uses, including flex space buildings. Industrial development shall be approved through the planned non-residential development process. And rather than just simply say that there should be a landscape buffer, it provides that the landscape buffer shall be a minimum of 50-foot wide to buffer adjacent non-industrial uses, and that the development shall preserve environmental resources. So the next slide shows the text as it would read if the amendments were adopted. So the mixed-low intensity district will include light industrial warehouse land uses, including flex space buildings. Industrial development shall be approved through the planned non-residential development process and shall provide a minimum 50-foot wide vegetated buffer zone to properly buffer the adjacent non-industrial uses and shall preserve environmental resource. So as you're probably familiar, the planned non-residential development process includes a request to rezone the property to planned non-residential development, and it requires approval of a preliminary site plan. The change for the medium-intensity sub-area is unchanged. The mixed-use development medium-intensity district will be light industrial warehouse land uses, including flex space. So this is a graphic depiction of currently active development applications. The subject property is shown there in green. These different blotches of color represent both residential and industrial uses. So this is the proposed Eagle Bend Residential Project, which is some 1,200 or so residential units. Over here is the Pineapple Grove Residential Development. That's 400 or so single-family homes. This is the KRE property, which is actually proposing a little commercial, some high-density residential, and then industrial space. And most of the other spaces are, you know, smaller tweaks to existing development, but most of it's industrial and residential. And that's showing what the demand is for land in the area. There's not much, there is not being proposed any office or other commercial uses like retail in the area. So this property here, orange, is also part of the Orange 95 Commerce Center, and the same prospective purchaser and developer is proposing industrial space for this property as well, some 363,000 square feet. So on this next slide is the intended roadway system for this Jenkins Road Special Area Plan. And you can see that the county is anticipating and planning for substantial development in the area and proposing the roadway system to accommodate it and to interconnect the So this concludes the staff recommendation. So this, uh, concludes the staff recommendation, I mean, the staff presentation. There's a more detailed analysis provided for you in the staff report. The staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners based upon consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Saint Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. And Corey or I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Irene, great job. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Um, Irene, um, could you bring back up the map of the developments, uh, in the area? I, I want to point out a couple of things. One is, um, the school districts, uh, in the planning stages for rebuilding Fort Pierce Cent, uh, Fort Pierce Westwood High School. Uh, as you can see, it's right there along Panther Lane. It encompasses the area, uh, parallel to, um, and east of Eagle, Eagle Bend, uh, over to Panther Lane up to Angle. And, and if you look, we're, um, below the blue arrow there above Orange Avenue, or, uh, adjacent to Orange Avenue. There's two projects in the cit, that's being annexed into the city of Fort Pierce that's moving forward. One is, I think it's called West Orange P D Plan Development, uh, and that's right above the Orange. And then above the avenue, more or less, is another project called Mill Creek. So there, there's a lot, uh, substantial things going on in this area, um, including public investment of, of the, of the, uh, rebuilding the high school. Uh, one of the things that, um, uh, we, we haven't made any decisions yet, but I think that one of the things that the school district's looking at is what, what does, um, can you, can you move forward to the next slide? What does this roadway network look like? And are there better opportunities for, um, uh, infrastructure for rebuilding, uh, the high school? Um, so just to let the board know and, and staff know what the school district's thinking, that we may have some opportunities here. And, you know, we believe that, uh, you know, some of this Jenkins Special District roadway network is important infrastructure so that we don't load all of our trips either on Orange or all of our trips on Jenkins. And that there's a, some kind of interconnectivity there. I just wanted to point that out and, and, uh, make the board aware of other things that are going on there.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Mr. Lounds?
Ms. Settlemeyer, would you explain to me what flex space is? Is that blue tarps and cheekies or Venetian blinds or what? Hole barns with up and down doors? What is flex space?
It, it is not, uh, concisely defined. As I understand it, it would allow for users who require different amounts of space. Some people would maybe want to lease a five-thousand-square-foot or ten-thousand-square-foot area. And others may wish to lease fifty-thousand square feet for the use. But it's also intended to allow some flexibility with regard to the ultimate use.
For future use?
What wants the buildings? This is a fut, this is a future land use map amendment. So we don't actually have a particular development that is being presented to you this evening. But the buildings would be designed to accommodate different uses and, and different, um, size spaces.
My next question is, we have a fifty-foot buffer around this property, is that correct?
That's, we're recommending that that accompany this, um, this policy change. The, the original policy provided for commercial and office and institutional use on the low-density and the low-intensity area. And that was, I, I didn't go back and read the legislative history, but my expectation is it was to buffer the residential uses up here to the north, existing single-family homes. And, um, it provided for a landscape buffer, but it provided no standards. So was that a landscape buffer of three feet, a landscape buffer of ten feet? So when you're talking about, uh, industrial, light industrial warehouse uses that might involve a lot of trucks, it could involve idling trucks, it could involve, um, twenty-four-hour operations. So if we want this to be a mixed-use area where residential uses and industrial uses can, um, be compatible with each other, uh, landscape buffers can go a long way to accom, accommodating both uses, is staff thinking.
I understand that, that the future use of maybe residential is being on the north side across Floyd Johnson Road. But, uh, it just, it strikes me that a fifty-foot buffer in an industrial area that is currently somewhat industrial as its use is today is a bit of a stretch. It takes down the amount of usable space that the, that the landowner could use when there's vegetative uses and, and ways to buffer this area without giving up fifty feet of this piece of property. I mean, ain't, um, who we hiding on Johnson Floyd Road right now? Manatees, ain't no manatees in that thing.
Go ahead. Chair Taylor, Commissioner Lounds, if I may add, uh, the proposed policy would cause for that minimum buffer to be designed and implemented on the western property line, uh, where the site currently is directly across the right-of-way from what's called the lake house, which is a special event and wedding venue. It's adaptive reuse of a nineteen-fifties or sixties home, uh, on a, a property that had an old extraction mine that's holding a large lake. You've noted the estate-sized residential, uh, homes, uh, across Floyd Johnson Road to the north. And then to the east where we're anticipating additional residential development as highlighted by, uh, Mr. Sanders this evening. If this, uh, body would like to recommend an alternative, uh, for instance, on the eastern property line where a two-hundred-foot right-of-way exists and the, the future anticipation of Jenkins Road to be widened and possible turn lanes in certain areas, I, I think staff, uh, would, would possibly agree to some concessions on the eastern property line because that right-of-way, uh, being an arterial road in the future as projected, there would be volume of trips, noise, light, uh, from that and, and potentially some green space with that transition. So that, that would probably be the, the targeted area for any concessions from that fifty-foot buffer.
How about the south side, Mr. Benton?
The, the recommendation of the policy would not require an internal buffer from, uh, industrial to re, industrial of fifty feet.
So that south line is, is exempt?
From the fifty-foot, uh, now our base landscape requirements. If these are separate development sites, there would be a minimum of a ten-foot landscape buffer.
Don't have a problem with that, but fifty feet's a stretch, my lad.
Understood, understood, Commissioner. And this evening, this evening's recommendation from staff, as the policy's written, would not require that minimum fifty-foot buffer on the south side, only from adjacent, non-industrial uses.
Okay, which would be the west side and the east side? Considering that Jenkins Road is a industrial road in my thinking with what's on there now and what's going to be further used with the area of Jenkins Road, that this board could recommend that the eastern edge be exempt from that fifty-foot also?
I, I think
Ding dong.
Staff would express concerns over eliminating the entirety of that buffer, possibly reducing it.
I don't want to eliminate it, I want to shrink it back to, to ten feet, depending on what's built there. Being that Jenkins Road is what it is. I mean, what are we gonna buffer it from?
In Commissioner
I understand the idea of a fifty-foot buffer to, to eliminate the visual effects, the noise, the sound, and all the stuff from industrial and residential. And I don't have a, much of a problem with that on the, on the northern end of it, except I think fifty feet is a stretch, being that there is a canal and a road and such have you there now that acts as a buffer. If you need to have a buffer on the western side of it from that, that's fine. But I'd like to see the board consider a little less buffer on this piece of property for what it's gonna end up being.
Thank you, Commissioner Lounds. If I could speak to that a little further. So tonight's, uh, conversation is pertaining to the future land use. Any proposed development, uh, projects for light industrial in the future, pending approval and acceptance of this, would be through a planned non-residential development, rezoning, and preliminary site plan in which that level of detail and some buffering, uh, would be provided in that package. The minimum code requirement today would be a fifteen-foot buffer along road right-of-way inclusive of Jenkins Road. So that eastern would be a minimum of fifteen, as opposed to the ten. And if I, I could clarify, the western partial that's shown, the existing use of the property to the south, I believe is a residence, but the future land use is expected as mixed-use or light industrial or something in between. Therefore, through the PNRD process, uh, that variable buffer could be set based upon compatibility and, and the appropriate design, understanding that the future use of the property is expected to be non-residential.
So the fifty-foot buffer is not necessarily etched in stone for this piece of property?
Not for the
Depending on what they do with it.
Not for the south property line, but it is, uh, as presented this evening, it would be the intention for a minimum fifty-foot buffer on the west side, the north side, and the east side. But as noted, your staff is, um, open to or somewhat comfortable objectively with, uh, concessions on the eastern, uh, buffer because of the expanse of the Jenkins Road right-of-way, if guided by this commission.
Is, is that typical of us to put an actual, like, number amount in the land use, in the future land use amount like that? Actually fifty-foot instead of just saying a buffer should be provided?
Uh, Chair Taylor, uh, members of the commission, I think that the closest thing that we've, uh, navigated more recently, if you recall, the Arcosa, Planned Non-Residential Development and Conditional Use, in which they were proposing the concrete utility, uh, product manufacturing. And if you recall that site design, they were proposing anywhere from two-hundred to three-hundred feet of, uh, stormwater retention lake and green space. Uh, we had the conversation about an opaque wall buffer and landscape layers. Uh, at that stage, the, the applicant through the PNRD design was proactively offering, um, that level of, of a buffer, several hundred feet. The land use sub-area policies, also in MXD, had qualitative guidance of providing for a substantial buffer. I don't believe there was a specific, um, dimension within that policy. But through that analysis and that experience and the, the amendment considered this evening, that's where, where staff was looking to set a floor, at least for those areas where established residential uses, uh, are present or, uh, non-industrial uses.
Yeah, I, I feel like to me it just makes more sense to, instead of locking us in that box of fifty-foot, that depending on what's built there eventually, not all industrial uses are the same. I mean, could it be in a warehouse, put up and a guy printing T-shirts or something? That's not gonna make a lot of noise. But that could still be a business that operates in industrial land. It just, it just feels weird that we would, you know, lock ourselves to fifty feet. Commissioner Slack?
Just to provide some perspective for the folks who are here this evening trying to understand this project. From that soffit where the wall starts to drop down and then goes and has some more ceiling, from the vert, the vertical part of the soffit to the other vertical part of the soffit, looks like it's about fifty-six feet. So this buffer that we're talking about is a little bit narrower than that. That's a very substantial buffer. At the same time, light industrial or warehouse has a height limitation of fifty feet?
In many cases, uh, it would allow for upwards of sixty-plus. This is on the outskirts of the airport overlay district, uh, but, but we wouldn't anticipate much over sixty feet in height.
Okay, and do we know how wide the roadway plus canal is, what that roadway section looks like?
Floyd Johnson Road right-of-way is probably in the ballpark of forty to fifty feet in width today. And the canal, uh, is probably closer to seventy-five feet, I believe.
Okay, so you can picture the width of the, the ceiling of this room. And so you've got a roadway section that's about as wide as that ceiling. And then the canal section, that's even wider than that ceiling. And then a buffer that's about the width of the ceiling. And then these buildings that get much taller. But when you have that much space between your property line and this segment of landscaping of some sort, and that landscaping is, is loaded closer to the roadway, and then you have the site circulation and the buildings setback from there, that helps provide kind of a view shield from these industrial buildings. And light industrial, I mean, you guys can go into all the different things that it could be. It could be the T-shirt printer, it could be a plastic pipe manufacturer. It could be all kinds of different things and we have to accommodate whatever uses are allowed and conditional uses if approved for, for this, this property. So I don't, I don't have an issue with having a vegetated buffer zone that's significant along that north side where we have housing across the street. I agree with Commissioner Lounds that we can shrink it down along Jenkins Road. I think that's perfectly reasonable, there's all sorts of cars back and forth. And you could put a screen wall and some landscaping there. I, I do think we should have a buffer where we have things on the west side. But let's, let's have a talk about how deep we think that vegetated buffer zone should be. You know, you guys are recommending fifty feet. What was the thought process behind that particular dimension?
Commissioner Slack, Slack, uh, the fifty-foot measurement, uh, was, uh, taking the, the fifteen-foot bare minimum and extending that greater, allowing for some green space because PNRDs require a minimum of twenty percent green and open space anyways for non-residential uses. Supporting the orientation or the placement of that on the, the outward perimeter for that buffer. Uh, I don't think there's a particular strategic, um, you, strategy behind that particular measurement. But as you highlighted, scale of the building, uh, some of the parking, when we talk about ocean requirements for backup, uh, maneuvering for forklifts, for trucks, uh, refrigeration of vehicles for cold storage, uh, light fixtures for a site like this that may operate twenty-four-seven and some of the potential for spillover or photometrics. Uh, the, the goal behind it was to ensure that there is adequate space to provide that transition in both geographic and vegetative buffer, uh, between those outward uses.
Yeah, I, I like that, that it's deeper so that it's not just a single row of trees with some hedge underneath. I think that's, that's a good point. Um, I'm not sure it needs to be fifty, maybe we can find some sort of medium depth and then add the, a wall screening it on the light industrial side so that it's concealed by all the buffer and that the, the trees are loaded toward the residential uses to help visually come, come more forward. I think that that could work, you know, maybe we, maybe we turn it from fifty to, say, thirty-five with a wall or an opaque fence. But I think, I think those, that could be, you know, a happy medium if, if we're trying to find a way to make the, the property more usable, yet protect our residents across the street. And it's really interesting having this mix of residential and light industrial right next to each other in, all over the place in this, in this part of town. And to make those neighbors happy, we have to come up with these solutions. So I, I, I think this is a good solution and I, I could go either way in terms of fifty-foot vegetative or thirty-five-foot plus opaque, um, perimeter on the property side and the vegetative toward the road.
Commissioner Slack, members of the commission, staff values this, the conversation and the feedback. Two aspects of it, reiterating that this is at the future land use map amendment stage. The planned non-residential development review would allow for some of the micro-level detail. You know, if, if it is the guidance of, of this, uh, body to, uh, you know, roll it back to a thirty or a thirty-five foot. Uh, the, the opaque buffer in the wall may be an appropriate conversation at the time of the rezoning, depending upon the size, the scale of the building, the use mix, uh, that's presented. But certainly providing that floor, even if the, the floor is back down to twenty-five feet, uh, you know, that would at least provide a, a minimum. And then through the PNRD process, we look at the design intent, um, considering the uses, the scale, uh, the mass of the buildings, the placement of parking with regards to the structures, the overall orientation, and some of that level of detail to refine, uh, specifics.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I, I a hundred percent agree with it, some sort of buffer needs to happen here. It just feels, I feel uncomfortable changing the comp plan to put an actual footage amount in it. When Mr. Chair? A PNRD would come before us and, you know, it completely changes what we were envisioning when we put the fifty-foot buffer in there. But now we can't change it because we're locked in on that. And that changes what we're able to do with the PNRD and, you know, you know, putting the site in what, what fits with what's on the site, to me. It just feels weird to me.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.?
I will tell you that, uh, the school district, we've got a lot of experience at buffers. And, um, what works and what doesn't work, uh, Fort Pierce Central is a good example. Fort Pierce Central is a good example. We've got industrial neighbors to our west, and what you can see is a bother. And what we ended up doing with the second project that came in on the north side of, on the west side but on the northern end of the campus, they put a berm in, and it makes a whole big difference. One, if you, the berm or wall will help block noise, vegetative buffer does very little. My point is, depending upon what they're doing, is there's a different appropriate buffer, and, you know, I applaud staff's attempt here, but recognizing that one size doesn't fit all on not knowing what type of industrial use, maybe there needs to be a little bit more flexibility on, you know, a designed appropriate buffer that would work to block the lighting, the sound, and all of those things that your, that those residential neighbors will be impacted by.
So can we, can we just, I mean, the PNRD will dictate the buffer, right? Isn't that why we approved PNRDs to begin with? Because they were a lot more flexible, they'd pick the buffer, we don't have to lock in at 50. And just to your point, when I built my house, I had to be 50 feet from the road on a half-acre property. So what are we talking about? I had to build a friggin' rectangle in the middle of a friggin' half-acre piece of property, had to give up 50 feet. I mow it every day. That's not a buffer.
That's what I'm mowing.
It's a buffer for me.
It is, but it's not a visual buffer that's landscaped. Maybe we're not talking about the same type of buffer.
Sure. I'm just saying 50 feet is not as big as you think it is.
Right.
Come stand in my yard. That's what I'm getting at. My point, though, is I don't think we should be fixated on the 50 feet, because every PNRD is different. They're all going to require something different, so why are we getting stuck on this?
I'm not fixated on 50 feet. 50 feet's probably too short for most industrial uses.
Let's just be clear, Mr. Chairman, if I can. This policy is going to apply only to this 34.7 acre site. This won't apply to all PNRDs that come in. It's just for this area that is designated in the comprehensive plan as a low-intensity area, and in order to allow more intense uses, the industrial uses, as opposed to the mandate of institutional and commercial and office. Anyway, without knowing the specific uses, it's hard to know which is the most intense, but the industrial is generally considered more intense than the commercial and the office and institutional uses, so.
What's the code's current buffering for industrial light?
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, if the industrial development is proposed adjacent to a single-family or residential development, it would require a minimum of 10 feet, a wide landscape buffer with an eight-foot tall opaque fence or wall with landscaping on both sides, and adjacent to roadway, a minimum of 15 feet. And as noted, through a planned non-residential development process, staff has the opportunity to recommend increases of that where necessary to support compatibility and, you know, avoid adverse impacts on surrounding or adjacent land uses.
Will the PNRD come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission regardless of the size or area?
Yes, Commissioner Slack.
Mr. Lowndes?
Mr. Benton, Ms. Lettermeyer, I'm, I don't want to beat a horse to death, but I think that in looking at some of the landscape that's available, that this county has used, that in selection of landscaping for buffers, I certainly wouldn't want to put a cabbage palm or a sable palm up for land, for buffer. That don't work. But there are some fine deciduous plants and trees that would do the same thing, and I agree with what Ms. Valerie has got to say, is with a visual effect from being at a distance, but those deciduous trees will grow and create a visual effect to block some of that, plus what you plant underneath it. I think that we would be limiting the landowner's use on this particular piece of property on Johnson Road, because he's already got damn near 100 feet between his piece of property and what's across the ditch that he can't do anything about. And what are we buffering against? I think the eastern side with Jenkins Road needs to be considered. I don't have a problem with a 50-foot buffer to the west, and we've got our buffer to the south, we know what that's going to be, because it's industrial to industrial, is it not? That's 15 feet?
Commissioner Lowndes, it would be a minimum of 10 feet where budding, an industrial site, at least the eastern half of the petition site, yes. On the west side, it would be a evaluation at the time of PNRD, depending upon the uses there and the proximity of those uses.
With what's on the western side of this property, I would not have a problem making a very good dense buffer to buffer this piece of property and industrial portions of it from what's there. My concern is limiting the landowner for what is on the eastern edge on Johnson Road or Jenkins Road, and what's on the north side of it to Johnson Road and the ditch and what's north of that. Other than that, have at it, sporty.
Chair Taylor, members of the commission, and, you know, garnering some of the feedback and theme this evening, and understanding the opportunity through the PNRD process, again, we'll hear from the applicant and the representatives this evening, but if the language were to read and shall provide an adequate buffer zone to properly, I don't want to use buffer again, but I will, properly separate or protect, screen, yes, thank you, Commissioner Slack. Drop vegetative to allow for a mix of vegetation and/or, depending upon the use type, something more structured, but provide an appropriate buffer zone to properly screen the adjacent non-industrial uses, and that's strategic. And the lake house, the event venue is not a residence, but it's not, it's also a non-industrial use. And so that would allow some design opportunity with future proposals through the PNRD process, review by staff, review by this body, and inevitably the Board of County Commissioners through a public hearing process, supporting input from adjacent property owners who would receive notice.
Right. Ms. Slack, can you live with that?
I can. We're going to see it again when it comes through as PNRD, we can address sound, noise, odors, visual, all of it, you know, whether it's a farm, it's trees, whatever. I'm happy.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Okay. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to say?
I won't mention buffer.
We're done with that.
Get my good reading glasses on here. My name is Patricia Sest, I'm with Engineering, Design and Construction, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Talking about the buffers, I think staff did a great job of presenting the project. When we originally submitted this application, we stuck with the original language on the buffers, for the mere fact that we knew we were going to go in for a PNRD. And now the language has been changed to require a PNRD, so that definitely will come before you, and all these things will be discussed at that time again. A 50-foot buffer is not well for this project, when you look at the right-of-way that's there and the potential design and what they're planning to do with maybe putting the lakes at the north side, you know, so I think that putting it in to the request at this level is inappropriate, but it would come back as part of the PUD, so we would request that that got removed and adjusted according to how it was stated before in regards to the buffers.
I agree.
And if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff, all up on the public hearing? If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on this item, please come forward. Just need your name and address for the board. For the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Howard Haskell, and my address is 6400 Floyd Johnson Road. Progress is a blessing, I'll tell you what, what's going on in our county and in Fort Pierce is amazing, but as a property owner on Floyd Johnson Road, I have some concerns. And I know you all are going to do the right thing, but I just want to let you know how I feel about it. You've been told that we've got 1,200 houses going in directly behind me. You put that picture up here you had a little while ago with the purple and the yellow and the blue, with a little white section that's in there, we're going to be surrounded by industrial complexes, concrete, trucks, noise, houses going in, and we talked a lot about the canal. Canal 44 is horrible. We almost, I couldn't get out of my property four years ago, whenever it was, we had that 22 inches of rain. Canal 44 was at the top. One of the things that, I don't know that this is part of what you all do, but as you think about these developments, with the 1,200 houses going in, retention ponds that are going to drain in the canal 44, and then the canal 31 to the west of me, all that water coming in that currently is going in dirt, I'm concerned about flooding. In addition, I'm concerned that when I sit on my front porch, I don't look out across the street, across the canal, I don't care if it is 100 feet across there, I don't want to, I don't want to see buildings over there, I don't want to hear noise. I bought that property to relax and enjoy my retirement. These are estate properties. We had no expectation that this was going to change, but we all know things do. So I don't care whether it's a 50-foot buffer, a 10-foot buffer, as long as I don't see what's going on over there, as long as I don't hear what's going on over there, and I walk out to my pond and go fishing, I'll be a happy camper. So whatever you need to do, I don't know the right answer. But as a homeowner, what I'm asking is that you take into consideration that when we bought that property, we had an expectation of peace and tranquility, and we got 1,200 houses going behind us, we got God knows what going on all around us, we've got canals that are going to overflow. I took a picture of the canal, I know this probably isn't your responsibility, that canal had completely clogged with vegetation. I've sent it to the people that are responsible for it, but if that canal's not taken care of, with all this going on and all that water potentially draining in those canals, we could have a problem. So I would simply ask that you take into consideration that a little, there we are, these houses right there, there's about eight houses.
Get back at the microphone, sorry.
There's about eight houses on Floyd Johnson Road, and please, whatever you decide, and I know everybody's going to do the right thing, I know the developers are going to do the right thing, they want to do the right thing, I know the city and the county are going to do the right thing, but please take into consideration that what you're going to do, or what they're going to do, is not going to be detrimental to why, when I bought my property and what my expectations were. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. And if and when this goes to a PNRD, we want you back here. That's when we'll need all that input. Any, anyone else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. There's any further discussion from the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lowndes?
The gentleman has a point, and I don't want to create a problem for the residents along there. I just want to assure that what we do, and I know that staff will consider it, we will consider it when it comes back before us, that a good dense buffer goes a lot for good neighbors, just like a good fence does. We've got a situation with Johnson Road and the ditch that's there, I'm actually concerned more about what's going to happen with Jenkins Road on the east, or east end of this thing. I'd let the board decide what they want on the buffer, but I, you know, I think that the 50-foot is a stretch if staff and this board will consider the density of what we put in for landscaping. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions or comments?
I got a comment.
Mr. Benton?
I mean, the whole point of the PNRD is for us to set, we can set the buffer then, to put it in there now, like, that changes the marketability of the property, what you could eventually do in it, it's going to be part of the green space anyways, so that's what the PNRD is for, I get the intent, but, I mean, when it comes to the PNRD, we could all say 100-foot buffer, because you're making concrete poles, or you're doing something over there that's dusty, we don't know, and we'll deal with it at the PNRD, it's going to be part of the record, we had this meeting about the property anyways, everybody knows everyone's feelings and intent already, don't put it in there, I mean, the 50-foot, because, you know, maybe 45 may be what's needed, or 35 may be sufficient, you know, they may want to put a wall in there, this doesn't say a wall, you know, maybe a wall with 30 feet, like Ms. Slack said, it's fine, so just leave it up for the PNRD, that's intended use, and keep it simple, that's my feelings on it.
Agreed.
You're here.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I would.
A second.
Motion to approve, just keep it at your standards.
Wait till the motion's finished. No, I'm ready, a second.
Yeah, so motion to approve and keep it at its standard buffers, and we'll address the rest when it's a PNRD application.
Are we all okay with the language that Mr. Benton had suggested?
With an appropriate buffer zone to properly protect the adjacent non-industrial uses. That work for you?
That works.
I second.
Did we hear that? Seconded by Commissioner Slack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion approved unanimously. That concludes our public hearings for this evening, if there's no other, thank you, Arian, great job, welcome to the team.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Benton.
Happy to have you.
Thank you.
You got a good coach there.
I move we adjourn.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lowndes?
Mr. Chairman, being the oldest member even in the room, except for maybe Joey.
By a lot, a lot older.
There used to be a speaker in the bathroom, excuse me, restroom, so that when we frequented the restroom, we could hear the conversation from here, not that you can hear the conversation from in there. Staff, can we get that speaker hook back up so we don't miss anything when old men have the necessity to, can that be worked out? Thank you.
We'll get Eric on top of that.
We have a representative.
Not a two-way speaker, no, 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 one-way, I want to hear, not give.
We don't want to hear you in there. Sometimes we can without the microphone in there.
Move we adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.